Deficit, and we'll see that that is actually working in a moment. So, in front of you now on the chart, it shows what the original values were per acre in Oakville, Milton, and Halton Hills, going way back to 2013, when we originally did the first bylaw, all the way to the new appraised values in 2017. So you can see quite clearly how quickly land has been increasing in Halton region. Just to give you some perspective on all those rates, from in Oakville, from 13 to 17, land has gone up 235%. In Milton, from 13 to 17, land's gone up about 196%, so almost double. And at Halton Hills, about the same, 198%, so almost double in the last four years. So it's pretty obvious, from looking at the price of land in the region, why amendments were necessary to the EDC. So as a result of those new land values, what you have in front of you is a chart that outlines what the proposed new amended rate would be. So you can see at the very top of the chart that land costs have gone up compared to the last amendment. One thing I'll point out in that chart is if you look at the second line from the top, it's your EDC financial obligation, so that's your EDC reserve fund that I was speaking about a moment ago. So just to give some context, in 2015, the reserve fund was around $46 million. So in about a year and a half or two years, it has come down to about $39.4 million. So it does show some evidence that the EDC amendments and those rates keeping pace with land values is starting to mitigate that deficit as well. So with regard to the actual proposed amended charge, so based on the new land values and the adjustments we've made to the unit forecast and the gross floor area, the new proposed amended charge would be $4,364 per residential unit and $1.11 per square foot of gross floor area. And just to finish off my section of the presentation, just to go over some key dates, so, and Brad will talk a little bit about some of the requirements of the amendment in a minute, but just to note, the board has provided a notice, which must be done according to the legislation, that was published in newspapers and circulated to appropriate agencies. Public meeting is tonight, May 3, 2017, with regard to Build. So we are in correspondence with Build, and we are trying to set up a meeting within the next week. We haven't heard any concerns, specific concerns, as of yet, but we will report back to the trustees if we hear anything after our meeting. And as was mentioned at the beginning, the board will actually consider this proposed EDC amendment at a meeting on June 21, 2017. So I'd be happy to take any questions with regard to the process and methodology and proposed charge.
Are there any questions for Mr. Amidolia? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Every time I look at this chart, I see something different each year. Through you, Madam Chair, to the presenters, could you explain in the, I guess it's Form G, the big spreadsheet, what eligible site preparation costs and land escalation costs and financing costs are?
So the site preparation costs, so in addition to being able to acquire sites through the EDC, the board is able to actually prepare those sites for a school to be built on. So that involves things like grading the site or providing services to the lot line. So that's where the site preparation costs come in. Sorry, the second one was the land escalation cost. So the land escalation costs, so as I mentioned earlier, the appraiser, in addition to providing per acre acquisition prices, also provides an estimate as to how that land may increase in value. So based on his appraisal this year, it's estimated that land would go up 10% from this year to next year, so that's the land escalation portion. And the last one, I think, was the financing cost. So anytime, so as part of the EDC, another EDC eligible cost is a financing cost. So if the board has to go out and borrow money in a given year to pay for a school site, then any interest or financing charges are an EDC eligible cost, and they're included as well.
Go ahead.
So do we know what rate we are using as a financing cost estimate?
This year, it's 10%. Oh, financing? Sorry, financing is, I don't have it in front of me. I think it was 3.5% or 4.5%, but it's consistent with, yeah, with long-term borrowing rates.
Seeing no further speakers, thank you very much, Mr. Amidolia, and I'll now ask Mr. Teichman of Overland LLP to make a presentation on the legal aspects of the proposed amending bylaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few points to make. So there's a few requirements the board has to satisfy before it has the authority to pass the amending bylaw. The requirements are much less onerous because it's an amendment to a bylaw rather than a new bylaw. So the first is, the board has to, had to give notice to the public of the proposed amendment. Dom and his staff took care of that by advertising in the local papers that the board was considering this proposed amendment. The second requirement is, we have to make available to the public sufficient information so that they can understand what the proposal is before the board. And if members of the board look through their staff report, you'll see a summary report prepared by Jax for Mr. Amidolia, it's from Watson and Associates, and that's been posted on the board's website. So that information has been made available to the public. And finally, the board has to give the public an opportunity to make their views known on the amendment. That's the meeting tonight, and there's nobody here. Like to say that means there's no resistance or opposition. We don't know that yet, maybe I'm being optimistic. But following the meeting tonight, the board will have satisfied the requirements, the conditions precedent to passing a bylaw, so the board will have the authority to pass the amending bylaw. And as in the, as mentioned in the staff report, this comes back to the board on June 21st. So if the board, in its discretion, decides to pass the amending bylaw on the 21st, it comes into effect five days later, June 26th. So on that date, the municipalities would start collecting the new charges. Dom and his staff will give the local municipalities, their building department, the building departments of the heads-up, that the charges are changing and they have to start collecting the increased amounts. So those are my comments on the legal requirements the board faces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teichman. Is there any comments or questions for Mr. Teichman on the EDC bylaw? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you both for coming. So now we'd like to invite any members of the public who have indicated a desire to speak to come forward in turn and let us have their views on the proposed bylaw. Seeing none, thank you very much to both of our presenters and Mr. Ranzella. This now concludes the public meeting requirement of the EDC bylaw amendment process. As previously mentioned, the board will be giving final consideration to the passage of an amending EDC bylaw at its public meeting scheduled for the evening of Wednesday, June the 21st, 2017. And this concludes the proceedings concerning the EDC bylaw. Thank you very much, Mr. Teichman and Mr. Amidolia. All right, so now we're going to move on to our action items. So our first is approval of our minutes from the April 19, 2017 board meeting. Can I have a mover? Trustee L. Harrison, seconded by trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on the minutes from April 19? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. All right, so we're now moving on to approval of business transacted in private session. Do we have any items from private session to approve?
Not for this evening, no.
Thank you very much. So our next item is the order paper. Is there any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I was hoping that at one of our future board meetings, that might not be as busy as the rest of our spring will be, we might have the opportunity to review the order paper in more detail, to bring everyone up to date on where we are specifically with regard to the items that have been on the order paper for a longer period of time, but also for those that we've passed more recently.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Collard, yeah, we, I think it's a great idea. Unlikely to do it until early fall, next school year. I think we'd be optimistic to try to do it prior to the end of this school year, but Dale and I will sort it out, and then we'll have a conversation with the chair and the vice chair of the board.
Thank you very much. Trustee L. Harrison, on the order paper?
Yes, thank you, Chair Amos. I was just wondering whether M14-0142 could be shaded in the interim? So I suppose that's looking to Superintendent Zonavell to confirm that the review of the supervision of students who have high safety risks has been done. I believe we recently received that report.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee L. Harrison, the answer to your question is yes, and you are correct.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers to the order paper, we have no action items tonight, so we will move on to communications to the board. And always one of the highlights are student trustee reports. Trustee Hajali.
Thank you. So we just had our student trustee elections on April 25, and it was great to see some of the trustees come out and support us. I just wanted to thank Associate Director Bogue and Susan Milson, as well as trustees Papin and Daniele and everyone else who helped out to ensure the election could be a success. I'd also like to thank the students who attended the elections, whom voted. We're thrilled to see so many come out, and it shows that Halton has such a passion for student voice, and we're very happy to see the population of students that came out. So I'd just like to congratulate Muktesh Mansour from Milton District School Board, as you saw him sitting in the stands, for being elected, as well as Dashon Metropolitansky, who regretfully could not be here today, for being re-elected as our student trustees for the 2017 and 2018 year. Other than elections, the Senate has been really focused on our Halton Youth Leadership Symposium. Our next Senate meeting is coming up around the 16th of May, and that's just going to be where we're going to finalize just the details as our event is coming up on the 19th of May. So it's going to be making sure everything's going smoothly and making sure everything's finalized for them.
Go ahead.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Hajali, and to all trustees, I know that we're not at the end of the school year yet, but you will be vacating your seat at the end of this year, and on behalf of the staff, I want to thank you for the work that you've done at this board table, but also the leadership you have shown in your school and with students for your entire high school career and your elementary school career. You're an excellent and remarkable leader, Zaid, and we will miss you, but the world is needing people like you, so we're glad you're going into it. And I believe Zaid will be going off to university in England. It's unfortunate, it's south of the border from where I'm from, but it's okay.
Aren't you living in Canada?
Well, where I'm from. But I want to thank you, Zaid, for everything you've done and with the elections. And I also like to welcome Mukteshad, and we look forward to meeting with you, and your first order of business will be lunch with the chair of the board and the director of the board, so that'll be coming up in June sometime. Thanks.
And just so you know, trustee Hajali, you can't leave yet. Just because the director is saying such nice things about you, you actually have to stay till the end of June. So we expect you to be around so we can still enjoy your company and see all the great things that you continue to do.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions for our student trustee tonight? Can you remind us when the student symposium is?
So it's going to be July 19th of May.
Okay, great, thank you, and that's at Sheridan?
It's going to be at Sheridan, yes.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, so we're now up to information items. We have no action items for May 17th, but any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none? Okay, so we're up to our information items for tonight and for decision on June the 21st. So we already have done the EDC charge bylaw, do we need to? Nope, so we'll skip right by that? Oh, nope, I guess we are doing something, okay? Oh, no, oh, you're doing the next thing, okay. All right, so, our always long-awaited, or always awaited, Long-Term Accommodation Plan, the LTAP, report 17062, Superintendent Birman and General Manager Ranzella, page 28 of your board package. Welcome, and when you're ready.
Again, I'm honored to present more or less the first, the draft of the 2016-2017 Long-Term Accommodation Plan. I do want to acknowledge the work and effort of my planning staff to complete this plan in draft form in light of the ongoing work that was undertaken as part of the program and accommodation review, and to do both this and the program and accommodation review work was exceptional, and I have a lot of, I want to give a lot of thanks to them in acknowledgement for their hard work in getting this out in a timely fashion. As you are well aware, this is coming back on the 21st of June. There is a piece that we have not incorporated, and that was as a result of discussions with trustees a while ago in terms of the outcomes of the program and accommodation review recommendations. So again, it's in a draft format until such time that the trustees make a decision on the program and accommodation review. Again, the board has developed its Long-Term Accommodation Plan to comply with the Ministry of Education requirements. This year's plan looks at projections from 2017 to 2026 for elementary and secondary schools in Halton Region. It also looks at new capital initiatives for the next three years, not scoundrel, school bond review initiatives or program and accommodation reviews, and review areas in schools that are facing enrollment pressures and, as well as decline. We knew this year. We always like to add something new, you know, a new model. And again, a lot of it also has to do with feedback from trustees from previous LTAP, and we try to improve, and I encourage staff to update the LTAP accordingly. What we've added this year, we've expanded the glossary of terms to include to include more programming terms, and they were more or less coming out of the program and accommodation review, again, trying to ensure that the edutalk is reflected in terms of what it actually means in the LTAP. We provide regional profile and reference maps. We just today updated with the 2016 census data just the age pyramids for each of the municipalities. We'll get down to the ERAs over the next week or so, because again, we just got today, staff was just able to do the municipal data on age pyramids. We looked at historical and projected run ones by municipality, pages that have been redesigned and with new graphs. We've included the French immersion historical progression factors for each municipality. We looked at the number of students entering grade 1FI, by feeder, non-feeder, and other schools. We've added identified schools with Ontario early years centers and early learning centers. We've redesigned the ERA and SRA pages. And again, continued visual improvements to enhance readability. So again, many of you have seen this in terms of what goes into long-term planning. We of course do enrollment forecasts, which include new residential development. We look at, we identify program delivery, we look at existing school capacity, we look at planning and review areas. We also identify utilization of pupil places, the site size of each school, portable capacities, and of course, timing of capital projects. Again, the enrollment projections, and I think most of you can mention this or state this by rote, given it's been out there for a while. In terms of our enrollment projections, we look at timing of new developments in terms of number of residential units by unit type, permit-ish, the permits, development permits that have been issued and the timing of residential units. Again, we only include those development applications that have been circulated to us and not any new OP proposals that are still not approved by the municipality and without any identification of numbers and types of residential units. We look at historical regional birth data, pupil yield rates of school-aged children for each housing type is reviewed and included in here, historical progression factors, and of course, enrollment from English language program, French immersion and special education program and placements. School utilization is important. Understanding existing and future school utilization is a key to the development of a sound LTAP. And factors that may impact school utilization may include JKSK class sizes, primary class sizes, the potential for split classes, spec ed programs and placements, capacity for portable classrooms on-site, and again, any other ministry of ed initiatives. The study area is region-wide with more specific review areas within each municipality, and they are broken down to elementary review areas and secondary review areas. We've looked at the accommodation needs of all ERAs and SRAs, and again, just as a caveat, the SRAs in Burlington have more or less reflected the status quo until such time if a decision is made on the Burlington Secondary Schools Program and Accommodation Review. We look at the need to build new schools and focuses on capacity and enrollment growth within these review areas. And we also look at the capacity of neighboring review areas to ensure that, to consider when determining accommodation needs. Community planning and partnerships. Again, the CPP, and hopefully, again, it's an acronym that's mentioned in a program aspect, so I excuse the duplication. But the CPP focuses on opportunities to share facilities with community partners. Again, when building new schools and undertaking renovations, considers use of unoccupied space in schools and schools identified to be closed and disposed. We had our first annual meeting last year in June. It was attended by a number of organizations as identified there. And as a result of that CPP, we had one community partnership for sharing, and that was some, I believe it was the cadets at TA Blakelock. Again, for this coming year, the CP, as per our board policy, the CPP annual meeting is to be held once the LTAP is approved. Of course, the Burlington Secondary Program and Accommodation Review is an ongoing initiative. Everybody is aware of the factors and initiatives with respect to that. Again, you're well aware that the director's final report has been released with the final decision to trustee is expected on June 7th. Again, to reiterate, the LTAP is based on the status quo scenario and subject to change following the final decision. Capital projects, again, we've completed the Alton Village Public School addition. Projects under construction, we have the Martin Street Public School rebuild, which is scheduled to open for this September, as well as the Craig Kilburger addition. Projects in progress, it's the Milton Southwest Number 10 Public School opening, scheduled to open for September of 2018, and the Milton Southwest Number 1 High School, which is scheduled to open in the 2019-2020 school year. Currently, board-wide, there is a combined elementary and secondary utilization of 97%. Quite good. By 2026-27, we're expecting enrollment to increase by about 2,019 students and with an overall projected utilization rate of 99%. Again, however, each municipality, there are review areas of significant growth and decline in enrollment. Board-wide, in terms of the elementary panel, enrollment is projected to increase by about 616 elementary students or nearly 1% by 2026-2027. Again, I think we've got to take that with a grain of salt in the context that we're still not including a lot of new proposed residential that has not come on from Milton in terms of the Boyne community, because we have no additional subdivisions. North Oakville, as well as Vision Georgetown. So I would expect that elementary growth to be significantly higher as we move forward and once those details come forward. And again, notwithstanding that, we are still looking at an overall utilization rate of about 99% by the end of the projection period. Elementary projections in terms of Burlington, we have declining enrollment in mature neighborhoods, which will lead to, you know, underutilization in all Burlington ERAs with the exception of ERA 109, which has Alton Village Public School. Burlington is projected to have about 2,500 empty pupil places by 2026 with a utilization rate of 83%. A number of the ERAs will remain or drop below 80%, and they're identified there. And there's basically two ERAs with utilization rates projected remain over 90%, and that's ERA 101, which is more or less the downtown Burlington area, and ERA 109, which is of course, the Alton community. Oakville, again, is projected to have a shortfall of 596 pupil places by 2026. Again, that's not including all the future new development that's going to be moving forward, and not including even the potential for the Oakville Number 2 Public School. Again, the ERA 118, which is North Oakville, is continuing to see accommodation pressure, and we will eventually need an additional five elementary schools over the next 20 years, or until the North Oakville community is built out. And our enrollment projections demonstrate a need for the Oakville Northeast Number 2 School by 2018-2019. Again, that's subject to ministry funding. And again, this new school will provide accommodation relief to Udenaweh River Oaks Public School and potentially Mounds, depending on how the French immersion program is rolled out. Milton, well, I can't say enough about Milton. Milton continues to see a high rate of new residential development, and again, not including all the new, the potential for additional residential applications. We will see a need for about 2,800 elementary pupil places in Milton, and that utilization rate is about 132%. Again, not including Milton Number 10 or Number 11. We are expecting Martin Street to open for September. We've established the boundaries for that new school, which should address some accommodation pressures at Angie MacArthur and Sam's Sherrett Public School. Again, the Boyne community has six elementary schools and one secondary school identified. Boyne Public School opened September 2015. The ministry approved Milton Southwest Number 10, which is again, scheduled to open for 2018-2019. And again, enrollments demonstrate the need for Milton Southwest Number 11 by 2020-2021. Again, subject to ministry funding and site acquisition. Elementary projections, again, Halton Hills is relatively stable. Again, a lot of, if Vision Georgetown does not move forward, you're looking at potentially 1,190 empty pupil places by 2026 with an overall utilization rate of 78%. We projected that number will decline substantially as Vision Georgetown comes online. And again, the preliminary studies for Vision Georgetown is about 6,600 residential units, projected with a population increase of about 19,000 people by 2031, and we're expecting construction starting in 2021. And we've identified about three elementary school sites and one secondary school site in Vision Georgetown. Secondary projections, board-wide, we're looking at 93% overall utilization rate. Enrollment is projected to increase by almost 1,400 elementary, secondary students over the next 10 years. We are projected just to have about 168 available pupil places, again, under the status quo situation, without any schools closing. And again, by the end of the projection period, we're looking at a 99% utilization rate. Again, Burlington, we're all aware of that, and I won't go any further with respect to that issue. But again, it just reiterates what we've, what we've mentioned in the director's report in terms of the current available pupil places and how many will be available 10 years down the road. Secondary school projections for Oakville, we anticipate about another 1,000 pupil places to be needed by 2026. And that's assuming that we don't have Northeast Number 1 High School. And there likely will be additional pupils generated as the North Oakville community develops beyond 2026, which will result in the need for our second high school. That is currently Plan 4, there's two Plan 4s in North Oakville. And the enrollments demonstrate a need for the Oakville Northeast Number 1 High School by 2020-2021, again, subject to ministry funding and site acquisition. And it's anticipated that new high school would provide accommodation relief to White Oak Secondary School. Milton, we are moving forward. It's projected to increase from about 103% to 154%. There's a shortfall of about 1,328 students. Again, that's not including Southwest Oakville Number 1, Southwest Milton Number 1 High School. Again, the ministry has approved construction on a new secondary school, and the school is scheduled to open for 2019-2020. Halton Hills, there's about 621 pupil places are projected to be available over the next 10 years. Again, that does not include any or account for any future development that may come from Vision Georgetown. In fact, given the limited opportunities at Georgetown District High School for any expansion, we do definitely need another high school, and that's why we've included one in the Vision Georgetown community. Again, moving forward, some proposed school bond reviews, and these are more or less given in terms of the fact that we are receiving funding for new schools or will receive funding for new schools. Milton Southwest Number 10 will likely have to occur the fall of this year as well, in the event we do get funding from the ministry for Oakville Northeast Number 2, we'll have to commence that in the fall of 2017, in anticipation of that school opening for September 2018. And for the fall of 2018, likely will require a boundary review study for the Milton Southwest Number 1 High School. So proposed capital initiatives, moving forward. Oakville Northeast Number 2 for 2018-2019, Milton Southwest Number 11 for 2020-2021, and Oakville Northeast Number 1 High School for 2020-2021. This does not include any capital initiatives resulting from the Burlington Secondary Schools Program and Accommodation Review. We'll likely have to address that once the board makes a decision on that, if there's going to be any capital improvements to existing high schools, if school closure or closures occur. We're anticipating, again, what we hear from the ministry, that the submissions are generally going to be requested probably in the next couple of weeks, with submissions by midsummer of 2017, and ministry approvals anticipated again in the fall of 2017. Next steps, subsequent to the board meeting, this planning staff, tonight's meeting, we will be posting the PowerPoint presentations detailing the LTAP by municipality on the board website. Public feedback notice will be placed in local newspapers through email center voice and press releases requesting the public to provide feedback, and feedback will be requested by May 24th. Right now, we are looking and reporting back to the board at the May 31st, 2017 meeting with the feedback on the LTAP once it's been collected and summarized. And once approved by trustees, again, this, the LTAP is scheduled to, for action on June 21st, the LTAP will be forwarded to the Ministry of Ed and all entities identified on the community planning partnerships notification list, and will be advised that the LTAP has been approved and directed to the board's website. And just to reiterate that, once the LTAP has been approved, then we can move forward with doing our annual CPP public meeting. I'd be glad to answer any of the questions.
Thank you very much for your report. It's always exciting to hear about the updated LTAP and all the work that's gone into it. So I'd like to first thank you and all of the people who evolved in this document, because I know especially with all that was going on, it was extremely busy, and I'd like to thank you for all the hard work. And it looks amazing, it's very readable, it's easy to follow, so I'd like to thank you for that. So there are a couple of comments and questions, trustee Collard.
Thank you. I do appreciate all the extra work that you've done this year, all the things that you've added, and I'm going to ask for one more, because I can never ask for enough, can I? On the elementary side of things, when you've done the historical enrollments, I got an echo going here. The historical enrollments, you break out English, FI, and gifted for elementary, but you don't break that out for secondary. And I was hoping that we might be able to get that information and perhaps even get CPP and essentials as well, so that we can actually see what numbers we're looking at in terms of secondary. Because truly and honestly, the gifted, the CPP and essential students are not in the regular English program, so it would be good to have that information.
We will hopefully be able to get that information in terms of the historical, if accurate information is available on Trillium. We'll look into that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you, and actually, I was going to suggest something very similar, and perhaps not for this year, realizing that the timelines are short, but just as for a future. I should proceed that with, I love the layout, and any question I had about this was about schools anywhere and the board is pretty much answered in here, and it's very easy to find things, easy to read, so you've done a wonderful job with it, so thanks for that. So in addition to some of the things that trustee Collard mentioned, I'd be interested in the IB program as well, I believe is relatively self-contained. Any of those places where things are fully kind of... kind of self-contained would be, I think, helpful for us moving forward. Like I said, I'm not expecting it to, to change this one, but in future, it might be nice to think about that. That's, that's my comment. My question, maybe it's a comment as well, is, and I'll, I'll just alert Superintendent Newton as well. I'm concerned about Boyne for the next year until Milton Number 11 opens. It's, it's looking from this that it's going to exceed its total capacity. And I was just wondering if there's any step, next steps that will need to be taken to address that before Number 11 opens.
Would you, would you like a response?
Sure.
So, through the chair to Trustee Graves. And we have been looking at Admin Council and School Ops about Boyne and the maximum capacity that it will be able to, to take on for the upcoming school year. We recognize that a boundary review will also be scheduled very close in the near future, September, October in Milton, to take a look at the Boyne neighborhood in that particular area in light of the new school being built to open in September 2018. So we have been looking at the possibility of adding additional portables on-site at Boyne, as well as looking at possible other strategies that we would like to reveal at a future Boards meeting as we continue to do the research in making sure that students can be accommodated in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Again, I really appreciate the staff coming up with new and innovative ways to use color and charts and graphs. I echo everybody else's comments. I might want to suggest that the wording for ERA 113 is not necessarily mature, but perhaps stable. There are more young children in my particular neighborhood. So it is stable, but I'm not sure it would be, is, is a different connotation of the wording. Also, was just curious as far as how the timelines go about if we do find little things that need to be jigged, where should we be sending the comments, type of corrections, et cetera?
We appreciate your comments. Anybody, again, it's, it's a pretty fulsome document. There may be some errors that, you know, again, after, after a while, the numbers all seem to jumble into one another. And we appreciate, you know, multiple eyes on it. You can send your comments or suggestions through to me, and we'll address them accordingly.
Also, I was wondering whether or not in the schools that have elementary gifted, I'm not sure how to do it, but if there is a way to figure out where those students' home, home ERA is. For instance, Morden has, the gifted is separated out, which is good. We can see what's happening in the neighborhood with respect to the neighborhood and not just the gifted program. But we, it's hard to tell if you've got children that are placed in the gifted program at Morden that live in the Morden area versus other places. And so when we're looking at, do we need more gifted sites? Do we need, you know, would, is, is just holding back the gifted people in Grade Six going to help? Or is Morden going to be overwhelmed just by its own neighborhood population, those kinds of things? And again, I'm not exactly sure how to get it, but in particular, in the Oakville area, I would be curious to know that particular piece of information, again, in release to numbers and research, rather than having to compile the information myself.
I, I, we wouldn't have any difficulty. I'm speaking for my staff. Hopefully, they, they agree with me. But we, we're, we're able to find and locate where all those gifted students are. So we shouldn't have any issues as to where they're coming from. We'll have to find out where we can put it in the document.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. And to actually kind of pick up on Trustee Harvey Hope's question, I'm curious around being able to delineate the French immersion students, which homeschools they would belong to. So let's say if we're looking at Heritage Glen, what number of students comes from Heritage Glen catchment, yeah, homeschool area comparing to students coming in from other schools?
Thank you. Seeing no further, oh, so, Trustee Harvey Hope. Yeah, through your chair. That, that particular issue is a Burlington and Oakville single-track kind of an information piece. It doesn't really affect a lot of places. But it would affect, like, EJ has two feeder schools. So, you know, that's an extra line. And, and in Ward Four, a couple of them have, you know, some English-only schools. So it's not a, I don't think it's a huge request. It's just in those places where we have the single tracks, and there's only five or six of them. So just, and we've had that information before, because every time we have needed it for a park, it is able to be pulled.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this really in-depth report. I have two quick questions. The first one is, when is the next funding announcement anticipated? Is that June?
The next funding announcement, they will be likely sending out a B memo or SB memo to school boards regarding their capital priority submissions. And I anticipate that they will ask for submissions to be done by mid-July in terms of capital priorities with announcements in the fall. And so, notwithstanding we have our LTAP, we will likely on June 21st also be submitting a capital priorities list to identify what the priorities are for our submission. So, so, and that's an outcome of the LTAP as well. So, but we anticipate announcements, just like last year, in the fall of 2017, maybe earlier, depends on the election and announcements, so.
Thank you, Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the chair. In 2006, the Province of Ontario released the Places to Grow, which outlined new requirements for where and how growth would take place in the Greater Gordon, Greater Golden Horseshoe. And in recent times, in the newspapers, we've seen that there's been a certain pushback by certain regions on the, the whole notion of population intensification because of the lack of funding for services and infrastructure. This being the case, how does it impact, should regions begin to push back? How does it impact your department and its planning as it tries to nail down, I guess, the future of enrollment in Halton Schools?
Again, it's going to be, from a policy perspective, it's very difficult to quantify some of the provincial decisions. And that's why our projections more or less look at what's happening, what applications are there. There are some higher initiative, like, you know, overall 30,000-foot type of reviews of what's happening. We know there's pushback from some, from communities saying, you know, rather than intensification, we should be looking at expanding our green space. So there's a lot of issues still happening. We'll deal with it once it comes forward to us in terms of something that is tangible, where we get plans of subdivision, and, and move forward with that. It's, it's always a concern in terms of, you know, the big question being intensification, what that impact is going to be. I know it's been a big issue with the Burlington program and Accommodation Review. You know, we're trying to get tangible evidence from, from the municipality as well. You're looking at growth and population, but how many units are you looking at, types of units? And, you know, it didn't, where and whatnot. So we've got to be cognizant of that, definitely. But it's really difficult to pinpoint exactly in terms of our crystal ball as to how the numbers will be affected. I think we've got to make sure that we have some built capacity available, especially in terms of intensification. But, and again, the experience of other boards on intensification hasn't been significant in terms of enrollment, especially at the secondary panel. Elementary may be slightly different. But again, it depends on the type of units that are being built. If they're all bachelor and one-bedroom units, not going to get too many families out of those. Now, so, and it takes time. There's a lot of pushback, as you, you mentioned. You know, there's a lot of pushback on intensification, you know? Developers are coming in saying, okay, we want to intensify. We want to build 27-story condos. And the neighborhood's saying, no, we don't want that. So, and that affects the timing of when some of these developments are going to proceed. So it's really difficult. We'll deal with what's submitted and what's circulated, and, and move on from there. And, and, you know, again, we look at phasing. We know that an application, if it's not really supported, you know, it, we push it off, you know? A few years down the line, it's not going to be immediate. Single-family developments, greenfield, we have a better understanding of what's happening there.
Thank you. And just to add to that, there was an article in the newspaper back in February that the Halton Region was going to halt development unless the Province of Ontario provided adequate funding to support this corresponding population growth. So the region's also pushing back unless they get some support. So, and that, that all ties into the information that the Planning Department does get, so.
Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much. So just a quick question with respect to WH Morden and the overutilization. I just wanted to confirm my understanding that, that utilization piece is being looked at in the context of the Special Education Review, given that it's a giftedness location. And just with respect to the timing of that.
Well, as, as you're aware, well aware, for this coming year, WH Morden was going to hit portable capacity issues. And so they've, we've, for this coming year, we were holding back the Grade Fives at Oakwood, who will remain there for Grade Six, as well as Pilgrimwood students for Grade Five will remain at Pilgrimwood for Grade Six because of accommodation pressures. And the understanding, and I will defer to Superintendent Zonoffeld with respect to what is going to happen in terms of the gifted report and, and, and moving forward.
Through the chair to trustees. As mentioned earlier, we are continuing with the Special Education Review. And I will bring more details about that to you. But in the meantime, the, I think we mentioned before that we hope to capture within that some recommendations around some short and long-term decisions around programming and support for students with a gifted identification. And that would include how we structure that support in terms of configuration of schools, number of sites, locations, et cetera, within the Board. So we are, maybe for lack of better words, sort of in a holding period. We don't want to make big changes around our locations of those programs until we can move further along with the review.
Thank you, Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you to General Manager Renzella. I just have a clarification on this new chart for the students, number of students by school board division entering Grade One FI over the last five years. You can use page 109 as an example, which is the one I'm looking at, ERA 113. And just on that note, that piece at the top is, I believe, a, a response to the question that I've been asking for, for years, in particular for this ERA, for figuring out where kids are coming from to go into Grade One. And in particular, these two French immersion schools, because we have a lot of students arriving at EJ that have not come from feeder schools. They come from somewhere else. So this is what that chart's trying to show, and I really, really appreciate that. And then the second piece down below, I believe maybe the title should be percentage of HDSP SK students that chose Grade One, because down below, it's actually only the kids in their school that picked SK. So that's, that clarification. But if the, if the chart is supposed to be, for instance, feeder school, 61 percent came from their feeder school for EJ. So that's assuming that the New Central and Maple Grove students that picked Grade One French immersion, that's where that 61 percent comes from, right? So if, if that's the case, and the 67 percent, James W. Hill coming from the feeder school, which means down the hall, because their feeder school is themselves, that should tie in to the number down below, which is showing in 15, 16, 54. And it doesn't tie in. So I'm just saying that for James W. Hill, the number at the top, at the top of the chart should be the same as the bottom and the bottom of the chart. And it doesn't seem to be tying in. So I'm just wondering if I'm reading the chart wrong. I can leave it with you. You can come back to me. I'm just saying is that for, if, if what we were trying to show was for EJ, 61 percent of the students are coming from Maple Grove and New Central, and 35 percent are coming from other, which is what I was looking for as far as coming from somewhere else. And so that, I think that's what we're trying to show. And if that is what we're trying to show, then that is showing me the information I want. But if that's the case, then James W. Hill should, should, we should be able to tie the top and the bottom charts together. I'll just leave that with you, because I just want to make sure I wasn't missing.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I do have one. First, I'm absolutely thrilled to see that the Oakville Public School is one of the, on the top of the list based on the population of the north and the amount of houses being built. And the high school is also a very strong requirement. My question is regarding that whole north area. Now that there's building on the east side of Trafalgar, should we be doing a boundary review so that those houses are being sent to Oakville, or to Iroquois Ridge and to those elementary schools down there? Because it's a logical divide. And I'm just not sure that White Oaks can accommodate all that if we don't have that high school. I'm just, and I know Iroquois Ridge is also at capacity, but it's sort of half a dozen of one and six of the other. So I'm just thinking it makes sense to keep things sort of in a, I mean, I know eventually it'll be across the top, but right now, that's not happening.
It's a good question. Again, you want to ensure is that your feeder schools go into the high schools. And so I, I think it's something that we should be looking at. And we'll, and again, just for trustees' information, and I think you're aware of it, we'll be back in the fall with a report identifying the undertaking of school boundary reviews. And I think over the time, we'll, we'll, again, address that situation, and, and we'll present it and discuss it as part of that report.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And seeing no further speakers, I'd like to thank you very much again for this report tonight. A lot of really good information, and I know trustees really appreciate it. And as you've said, that if trustees have other questions or comments, they can pass them along to you in the meantime, before it comes back in June. Thank you. Okay, so we're now up to our committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Just that CAC met last night. And thank you to Trustee L Harrison who popped in, and our other trustee, CAC trustees. The bulk of the meeting was focused on the Burlington Par. Director Miller and Superintendent Patrick Barrett came and gave a presentation on the par to CAC. And then the rest of the meeting was focused on considering delegation material, concerns that CAC had regarding that. And CAC trustees, is there anything else you would like to add?
If I could, yes. The trustees left the meeting at the point where the remaining members of CAC decided to discuss the content of their delegations, because we felt that we should not be present for that part of the meeting. But there were some really good questions coming from them and a lot of really insightful comments.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. And this is related to OPSPA, the Ontario Public School Board Association. As you know, I am on the executive committee. And just two things out of OPSPA. OPSPA has announced that it has hired its new executive director, as Gail Anderson is retiring. And we have hired Rusty Heck, the Director of Education for the Corea, the Pine Ridge School Board. He'll be beginning June 1st. So I look forward to seeing what he brings. And as well, as a representative of OPSPA, I did attend two days of community hub meetings with the various ministries. I took a good number of notes. I apologize for the length of them, but I have sent them all out to you, along with the one almost to the day, three years ago, in the integrated service delivery model that started the conversation that I thought you might be interested in. So just wanted to let you know I had to send that out.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you very much. Through the chair, I'd like to give a report on behalf of the Inspire Committee. And I'd like to, at this point, congratulate the winners of an Inspire Award for the month of March 2017. Michelle Wallwork, a program... Sorry, who's a volunteer at W.H. Morden. Linda Roganowitz, who is a teacher at CH Norton. Lisa Miselli, a teacher at Pine Grove. Kathy Podner, a volunteer at West Oak. Teresa Wilson, who is the mental health lead, working from New Street. And Karen Yip, volunteer at EW Foster. All six of these winners of the Inspire Award have elected to receive their award through individualized presentations at their respective workplaces or volunteer placements. And so we look forward, as a group of trustees, to being able to present those awards through this next month. I'd like to also encourage all of those who are watching tonight to continue to forward their nominations to the Inspire Award. We are currently working on the evaluation of those nominations for the month of April. And we have, it appears to be, six outstanding candidates that we are having to look at at this time. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you for committee of the whole. Our last meeting was also on the program accommodation review. Our upcoming meeting next Wednesday will be budgeted. And there'll be a half-hour private session that proceeds public at that time. The following meeting is also anticipated to be budgeted. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Through the chair, the accessibility coordinating meeting will be held next Thursday, May 11th, from 9:00 to 11:00 in the trustee boardroom. And we'll continue our work on the accessibility multi-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Just a reminder that the OPSPA annual general meeting will be in Collingwood this year. It's being held from June 8th to 11th. The hotel where it's being held has already been sold out. And they have booked a block of rooms at an overflow hotel, which is a short walk away. This year, we will be hearing a lot of really well-thought-out speakers, including learning about some social media and next-generation learning and equity and diversity, as well as an opportunity to learn a little bit more about assessment in the service of learning.
Thank you. No? Okay. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further speakers, we are now up to the director's report. Associate Director Bogue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of short items for the director's report. And I'd like to turn things over to Superintendent Etoff to talk a little bit about Canada 150.
Thank you. Just wanted to provide an update. I did forward a reminder email out to trustees of our Canada 150 Before and Beyond Celebration, which is occurring next Friday, May 12th, at the Welcome Center in Meltem. We have an incredible lineup in store. This is traditionally a teacher conference where teachers primarily attend and increase their awareness and strategies around a variety of different topics related to equity and inclusive education. This year, we're using it to highlight the work that we've done with our First Nation, Métis, and Inuit education and how our federal grant, as part of the Canada 150 initiative, has translated into some pretty incredible learning for students, staff, and the system. So one thing that we're going to be sharing as part of that conference and celebration is a short video compilation that we hope to share with the board in the future that highlights some of the great work that's been going on in our system related to this important work.
Thanks, Superintendent Etoff. A few other items for trustees. Just a reminder for the public that's viewing as well that the par delegation evenings are scheduled for May 8th and 11th. And just a reminder to folks that we will be live streaming. We have the Studio Theatre at MM Robinson set up as well for folks to view. And that the gallery in the boardroom here is not open to the public on that evening, as it'll be full with delegates. Tomorrow is the Human Library here at JWS. The theme is indigenous cultures. There will be a smudging ceremony and land recognition at about 10:00 a.m. And the Human Library starts at around 10:20. And we have a variety of indigenous human books here that will be available for loan. And it sounds like trustee Daniele's already booked hers. Some very interesting stories, and we're looking forward to that tomorrow. This week is Education Week. I think trustees are aware, certainly. But for the public, there are lots of different activities that are happening in our schools this week. And one of the highlights as well is Student Excellence Evening, of course, tomorrow at Georgetown District High School. At the beginning of this week, the Have Your Say survey went live on our board website. And the company that we have that's supporting us in this survey has given us a little bit of feedback. There was quite a spike for parents and guardians in community that have already logged on. And so we've got some response already. The Have Your Say stays open for about a month. And so our staff and our kids will have opportunities as well to have their say. So we're looking forward to looking at that data. And we'll be sharing that back with trustees, of course. And one last thing, this is hot off the press today. One of our teachers at Dr. Frank Hayden High School, the teacher's name is Jamie Mitchell, has just won the Prime Minister's Award for Teaching Excellence. So that's a huge honor. I know Jamie. He's a math teacher. I hired him, actually, a number of years back. But I won't take credit for this accomplishment. But he's the kind of math teacher that you'd want to have if you were a kid. It's a very different kind of approach, innovative and out of the box, and not that sort of traditional, what you think of as the traditional math approach. So kudos to Jamie. This is a great honor for him. And I think that's all I've got. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Any comments or questions for the associate director? Seeing none, then we'll move on to communications from the chair. And I have a few things. So last week was Earth Week. And I know a lot of our schools were out cleaning the surrounding areas and making an impact on all the trash and garbage that had collected over the winter months. And I know many schools collected many, many, many bags of trash and made a huge difference to their neighborhoods. So congratulations to all of them. As Associate Director Bogue said, it's Education Week, but it's also Children's Mental Health Week. And I think it's kind of ironic the two go together, because they are so entwined. And that leads me to... I was just at a conference last week for Adolescent Sleep Health and School Start Times, a national conference which happened in the United States. And it was a group of health professionals, sleep scientists, educators, parents, students, and other concerned citizens who are dedicated to increasing the public awareness about the relationship between sleep and school hours, and to ensure that school start times are compatible with the health, safety, education, and equity. Schools starting prior to 8:30 a.m. are out of sync with the biological clocks of young people, which means children age 12 to 25, which includes young teachers. Even more disturbingly, starting school at these hours has been linked not only to widespread sleep deprivation, but also to a whole host of physical, psychological, and educational problems. So by having better sleep, you can improve your alertness, your memory, your attention, your cognitive processing skills, improved academic performance, which apparently is twice as great in disadvantaged students. It has reduced tardiness and dropout rates and more sleep per night. And reduced fatigue has reduced depression, anxiety, and suicidal thoughts and behaviors. It also has improved athletic performance, because the athletes are more rested and able to perform. And there's a decreased risk of obesity, eating disorders, and diabetes, plus improved mood and impulse controls. So you can see that there is a huge advantage to having a later start time. That makes a huge difference to students. I'd also like to mention that last week at White Oaks, it was their 10th year inside ride. And I would like to thank Associate Director Bogue, Director Miller, Superintendent Pennyfather, and manager Denton. Oh, and a parent from the community, Sherry Kirkham, for being a ride. We were the emoji motion. We were emojis. And we raised quite a bit of money. This was their 10th year, and they were trying to raise over $30,000. And at last count, they still hadn't got it all. They were about $27,000. So I made a huge impact and contribution towards helping youth with cancer. I also like to say at White Oaks, they placed ninth at Harvard University in the high school debate contest, which is a huge accomplishment, because they're competing against schools from across North America. My last item is regarding our delegation nights, which are May 8th and 11th. And as the associate director mentioned, we're only going to allow the delegates that evening in the boardroom. Other supporters can watch the live stream either at MM Robinson High School or at home, because it will be livestreamed. But we have over 80 applications to delegate right now. And some of those are multiples. And we haven't reached the actual cutoff deadline for the delegation spots. And we only have potentially 62 spots available. So the vice chair and I went through the requests at the moment. And some of them have very little information. And we need that information to be able to determine whether there's... But there's some good... That we're not getting repeats from the different delegates. So I know this is a very sensitive issue and that it's highly emotional for everyone involved. I wanted to let you know that there is representation from all of the high schools and community members. But we want to ensure that there's a variety of perspectives. So we've asked for a delegation description as a part of this process, because if we don't have that description, it's awful hard to be able to make a decision about if we're having multiples of the same type of request or if we're getting all the varying perspectives. So I did send out an email to all of the individuals who had made a request so far and asked them if they had multiple delegations from a household that we were going to ask them to amalgamate themselves to become one delegation. And we're also asking that each person's only allowed to delegate once. They can't delegate on multiple topics. They have to incorporate them together in their one delegation, because we do have some of those as well. So we are going to do our best to try and accommodate everyone that we can. And we believe that is possible. So that is why we sent out that request for information, because we believe that by doing that, we'll be able to see the types of delegations that are being requested. And we will try then to accommodate all those who have applied. I believe that's all I have at the moment. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, then we will move on to trustee questions or comments. Oh, one thing I did forget. I apologize. About the delegation process, because I saw a certain trustee's name, it reminded me. We have... To let you know, there are other ways and opportunities to share your perspectives with trustees. We have been reading all your emails. We have been answering the phone calls we get. Some people have been knocking on doors and the trustees to speak to them. So we are listening, and you don't have to delegate for us to hear, because we are still getting the information that is relevant. And we are hearing your voices. So thank you. Trustee Gray.
Sorry, we're on the trustees' questions and comments, okay? Just some information then that I could share tonight. Just wanted to say kudos to MSB and Robert Little in Acton for last night for celebrating Education Week through an evening of activities for parents and students focusing on the delivery and instruction and community resources available to help parents and students. So that was a wonderful evening and well-attended. Thank you very much for mentioning that the Awards of Excellence is coming up to the Hills tomorrow. We're really excited to have Halton come to the Hills and participate in this wonderful celebration at Georgetown District High School. From the Halton Learning Foundation, please be reminded that reservations for the golf tournament are now due. And I'm really excited to see all of the trustees on Friday. I will be when we all gather together to support the Food for Thought at their gala and fundraising activity. And finally, I just wanted to say that the trustees' initiative regarding the JWS garden renewal to celebrate Canada's 150 is soon to come into flowerish. Thanks goes to all of the trustees for their work on this initiative. We're all excited to see the results.
I can't wait to see it. Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Burlington Par process and potential decision timeframe in June is the context for my question. Given that our annual community planning and partnerships meeting is planned for late June, could you describe the actions that have taken place since the June 2016 Community Planning Partnership Meeting to ensure that potential partnership opportunities are investigated and welcomed throughout the year? Thanks.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair, to trustee L. Harrison and trustees. And thanks for the little heads up that this was coming. So I pulled together some of the detail. I think that might be helpful. I think trustees are certainly aware that the community pathways or community partnerships piece is something that follows the LTAP each year. So for sure, the LTAP happened last May, was approved by our board. And then there was communication with organizations who are on our notification list, if you will. We have 44 community groups that are on our notification list. And they were notified of the CPP meeting on June 22nd, notified both by direct mail. And then... And that occurred on May 26th in preparation for the June 26th meeting. A number of organizations attended, nine organizations. A number of organizations attended, nine organizations attended, and from that, four organizations have been having some conversations with us. After that June meeting, additional organizations came forward, and have been added to the list, so they will be, we will be communicating with them regularly as well. This year, in October, board staff, starting in October and going till June 23rd, board staff have participated in a number of community meetings as well with a variety of organizations. So, there was two meetings with Community Development Halton, and at those meetings, there were a number of non-government organizations present to talk about co-location of services and potential partnerships, those kinds of things. There was a meeting with the City of Burlington, and there was a meeting with one of our MPPs and our senior advisor to the premier as well, around community hubs. And at that meeting, some of the non-government organizations attended as well. So, there's been a fair bit of back and, back and forth. With the initial, I'll just backtrack a little bit, there was, just in preparation for that June meeting as well, there was some advertisement done on, through the local media, through the newspapers, as well as our own Twitter feed and news releases as well. This year, as well, connected to the PAR, we, following the PAR initiation on October 19th, we did contact all of those community partners again by email and by regular snail mail, a day after, to let them know that the PAR was initiated, and to invite their participation in, or interest in the use of any available space. There was managers of planning for the City of Burlington and the Halton Region also were contacted, and then a further communication went out to those community, potential community partners in February, to let them know that the last final public meeting for the PAR was to occur as well. So, there's been a fair bit of back and forth, trying to engage folks. I think some of the challenges that surfaced at the meetings, when we got folks face-to-face together in the, in the same room, were around where folks wanted space, wasn't necessarily where space was available, or folks expressed an interest in this, sort of walked away a little bit later in the process. So, there's still a few groups that we're working with, we're having conversations with. And one partnership actually has been sort of signed off at TA Blakelock High School. So, that's a bit of a summary. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, my question is also with respect to the PAR. I had requested some information, as well as a list of maps, and I was wondering when we will be getting the information and the maps. The last time I spoke with Mr. Renzella, he said he was working on the maps. That was about a week ago, and I was just wondering how they're coming along, because I'd really like to get my hands on those maps.
Thank you for that question, trustee Collard. I'm not sure, but I'll touch base with Mr. Renzella right away and see what we can find out.
Thank you. Trustee Danielli.
Thank you, and I will beg your indulgence for a second. I'm going to take us back to late 2009. There was a play in Toronto, My Mother's Jewish Lesbian Wiccan Wedding, and it was written by a Toronto man, David Hine. The relevance to this board is that David is an acquaintance of mine, and there was a song within it called "A Short History of Gay Marriage in Canada." And I prevailed upon David the next year for our GSA conference to come and perform, and he also led a workshop for those students at the GSA conference. The relevance to now, I am very, very proud to say that David Hine and his wife Irene, who co-voted, have just been awarded seven Tony nominations for their come-from-away play. So, it's somebody, he was just getting his feet wet back then, and came out and shared his skills and his history with our students. And to see him go from that to the incredible success he has now is nothing short of amazing.
That's awesome. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Through the chair, today I had the pleasure of attending the premiere performance of The Lion King at Burlington Central High School, presented by John T. Tuck Public School. The show was amazing, the music, the costumes, the choreography. Months of work went into planning, practicing, and organizing. Congratulations to John T. Tuck and all your hard work. The show ran today and will run again tomorrow at 11:45 and 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Just wanted to shout out to Georgetown High School and Burlington Central High School, who both went, represented Halton at the World Robotics Championship in St. Louis. And I believe Central came back with a sixth place, and I'm sorry, I don't know Georgetown to my colleague, no? Okay, but congratulations to them both. They represented us well, and we're really proud of them. And tomorrow, I have the opportunity to lead a Jane's Walk at Aldershot High School, and I'm very excited about taking some students around and meeting people in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you through your chair. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending Multicultural Night at Pilgrim Wood, and also at Abbey Park High School, and both were just amazing events. Met a lot of parents and students from different cultures, and got to experience and learn about different cultures in our school, so that was phenomenal. And I want to kind of do a shout-out to Abbey Park for organizing Culture in the Park, which was followed by a really wonderful multicultural talent show. So, I look forward to hopefully repetition next year. Zaid, I know you won't be there, but it was a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. This one's a good news story. I wanted to congratulate Oakwood Public School for launching their fresh salad bar last week. Associate Director Bogue and I were there to partake of the maiden voyage, and they're utilizing products from local farmers. And certainly, the volunteers go above and beyond to provide healthy salads and foods for the students at the school.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, could I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Pappen. Surprise, that passes unanimously. And it's not even 9:00 yet, so thank you very much, everyone, and have a good evening.